And I'm going to call the meeting to order. It's a special city commission meeting. It's May 3, 2016. And I'll have a roll call, please.
Mayor Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
And if everyone, please stand. We'll have a pledge of allegiance to a moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Administration 3.1. 3.1 Matters Pertaining to Charter Ordinance Number 39 Petition.
Mr. Bankston.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, as you all are aware, on February 16, 2016, the governing body adopted on second reading Charter Ordinance Number 39. And that Charter Ordinance was published on February 19 and February 26. That Charter Ordinance exempted the City of Salina from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A and provided substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for the improvements and repealed Charter Ordinance Number 38. As you might recall, the Charter Ordinance procedure is addressed in Article 12, Section 5 of the Kansas Constitution. That's more commonly known as the City's Home Rule Amendment. And it specifically provides a means by which cities can adopt and the circumstances under which cities can adopt Charter Ordinances. That process includes the potential for the filing of what has become commonly known as a protest petition any time within 60 days following the second publication of the Charter Ordinance. And if a valid petition is filed, that then leaves to the governing body the question of whether the matter is put before an election. And in that situation, the Charter Ordinance would not become effective until an election is called, takes place, and a favorable majority approving the Charter Ordinance would then put it into effect. As you also know, we do have the situation where a protest petition was filed. We can go last Monday. It was within the time allowed, within the 60 days following the second publication. It was found, however, that, well, I should add that, as is customary, the petition is filed with the city clerk. And upon that filing, the city clerk then transmits it to the county election officer for the opportunity to then, the county election officer's responsibility is to validate the signatures primarily determining whether they are qualified electors in the City of Salina and to determine whether the requisite number of signatures required has been achieved. It was noted upon the filing of that petition, certain matters that are incumbent for the city to address. And that is what prompts this matter being brought before you today. The proposed resolution addresses certain of those matters that relate to the validity of the petition and directs, if it is your choice, that the city's legal counsel would then pursue an action in the Saline County District Court. The statutes relating to petitions not only set out the requirements as far as a petition is concerned, they also address at this stage what is to occur if there is a question as to the validity of the petition or the question that is posed in the petition. And it's really incumbent upon the city to make its evaluation of that and, if necessary, pursue a determination by the district court as to the validity of the petition. It's really more of a matter of the integrity of the system, if you will, as far as, these are obviously important matters, and it's more a matter of just following that process under the statute. The points that were recognized in relation to the petition, you see there set out in Section 1 of Proposed Resolution 167347 that is before you. The first one listed is that it was found that the petition as submitted included two pages petitioning a separate issue, the repeal of Charter Ordinance Number 38, under a separate proposition and a separate title. The significance of that is that one of the statutory requirements under KSA 25-3602A is that each petition shall consist of one or more documents, which in this case there were multiple pages, which is fine, pertaining to a single issue or proposition under one distinctive title. So that is what prompted the noting, the fact that there were separate issues relating to the repeal of Charter Ordinance Number 38 included in the filing. Other details, as you look at B, C, and D, there is a requirement under the statute that the circulator's residence address, as you might be aware, these pages are often circulated by different persons, and there is a certificate that each of those persons carrying the petition are asked to sign. There is a statutory requirement that they provide their residence address as the circulator. The forms of the petition provided for that, but in some instances, those were not completed. There's also the matter of certain dates. Each signatory dates their signature on the petition. And there were the instances of certain ones that actually were dated prior to the adoption of the ordinance on final, on second reading. And then there is the matter of the statutory requirement relating to the full, complete text of the Charter Ordinance that is being protested. And it was noted that there was not an attachment of an exact copy of the Charter Ordinance referred to in the protest petition, actually either Charter Ordinance 38 or 39. And then Section 2 of the proposed resolution, if it is your choice, as I mentioned, directs that the filing be made by legal counsel in the Saline County District Court. The statute addressing that is 25-3601E. It places a 20-day time limitation on any matters, well, the filing must occur within 20 days of the filing of the petition. And then it also addresses the time period in which the district court must enter its order. So that is the matter before you. I'd be happy to answer any questions if I can. And again, as I say, it's more a matter that when these sorts of questions arise, it does fall to the city as the recipient of the petition to address them. And really, the only definitive way to address them is seeking determination by the Saline County District Court.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, I have, in regard to the four findings, A is fairly self-explanatory, but I might understand that A, that actually D even shows that A lacked sufficient language that was filed with the city clerk for the official petition language?
Well, there's a statutory requirement that the complete text of the Charter Ordinance be, that someone looking to sign that petition ordinarily would be attached, I suppose, would have an opportunity to see what they're being asked to protest. And that was one other aspect that, there is some further guidance, I suppose, I should mention. There was actually a case in 2011. The City of Prairie Village was confronted with much, some similar circumstances. And that was one issue that was addressed by the court in that particular case. So that is simply a factual element that would be left, again, for the district court to assess the significance of that.
Okay, so that, in essence, it was lacking, according to D, was lacking the eight or nine page or 11 page, whatever, Charter Ordinance 39 as it was.
Right.
Well, and it might not even have been that much. What was it, maybe four or five pages?
The point about these findings is, as you can probably ascertain, I mean, they're your findings, so if they, if you have any desire to modify any of them or clarify them, they were intended to be simply factual statements, not attempting to draw any conclusions. That's, of course, the role of the district court judge in terms of how these factors would influence his or her assessment of the validity of the petition.
And then looking at, looking at the second one, B, with regard to the circulator's residence address, were, how many different circulators were there? And how many of them?
Good question.
Didn't have, did some of them provide, some not provide?
The, there's a combination of those. In fact, we had really just looked at that question this morning. And it was my understanding that there were approximately 13 of those that were in the circulator's role. The significance of that address is that as a circulator, the statute provides that one subjects themselves to the jurisdiction of the Saline County District Court for the very reason of, as it speaks to there, the integrity of the petition process. So that's basically why it's not only the identity, but also the residence address of the circulator that is relevant.
Okay, but there's no requirement that the circulator be a resident or a registered
The, I can't speak to that.
Okay.
At this moment.
Okay. I only ask because I was approached to sign the petition by someone that lives out of town.
I see.
And so I was just kind of curious as to what the, what the statute called out for as far as people that were collecting signatures and presenting them.
And number C, it included pages in which the dates of certain signatures predated the date of the adoption of the chapter for the ordinance.
Right.
For the Charter Ordinance.
You know, which I understand, and as you could probably ascertain from that, that that may have been simply a matter of error.
Might be.
And because we know that, or you can see from the page that, you know, there were other dates that were consistent with the timing of the signature in following the second publication. So whether those were simply a matter of error or not, they're the types of questions that we all might have a thought on, but we can't definitively address the consequence of that, so.
So we just, at this point, don't know whether it's just the petitions are insufficient or invalid?
Right. That's the question.
That's the question.
These are, these are, would appear to be problematic. It's incumbent upon the city to address those, but it's not within the city's domain to determine those, other than, as what we've done, suggested that you examine here and show the basis upon which you would suggest the need to get a judicial determination of the validity of the petition. That this isn't obviously just taken lightly. As I say, it relates to the integrity of the process, nothing, nothing more than that. It's just a matter that the process first comes to you as to whether there are questions, and then provision is made under the statutes for the district court to address these.
The county clerk would determine some things. For instance, the validity of the signatures, including the dates that they were acquired.
The validity of the signatures and the dating and so forth, we, you know, that aspect is certainly something that very well could be within the realm of the county election officer. That is, you know, certainly up to Mr. Merriman and...
The only reason I'm asking is that, and I don't know how many signatures there are or how many are needed and how many are questioned, questionable. I was wondering what might be the path of least resistance at this point, whether to go ahead and check the validity of the signatures, if it seems like it's close enough or if there's an overwhelming number and, you know, and a few here and there aren't going to amount to anything, or to initiate a court process, which is expensive and, you know, time-consuming.
Sure. The, the only thing I would say in particular is that this, the matter of, well, you have, you have the two separate sets of questions. And I can't speak for the county election officer, but I would assume that it would be difficult for the county election officer to necessarily to know how to address this matter of these two petitions, the two forms of page within the same petition, and how to handle those signatures. So...
And it would be extremely time-consuming, I imagine, for him, since he's in the middle of working with the other petition.
Yeah, they're, my personal observation, they are quite efficient there. But the, we are dealing with two separate sets of questions. You know, and I say this not trying to influence which way you all choose to go with this. And to a certain extent, I, again, I don't want to speak for Mr. Merriman, but I would assume it would be rather difficult for him to address his verification of the valid signatures with certain of these questions pending.
My only other thought, I guess, would there be any points in allowing the petition organizers the opportunity to withdraw the petition, knowing that there are significant issues, especially with the one with petitions for two separate ordinances where only one
Well, if I'm answering your question, I'll elaborate a little bit on a couple of the procedural aspects. The petition when filed is deemed as one. And the time for filing a petition has now passed. It expired, actually, I believe, the 26th. It was the day after the filing was made, if I recall correctly. So it's not possible, by my understanding, to withdraw a portion of that, like extracting the conflicting pages.
I'm saying withdrawing the whole thing because, the whole thing could be nullified.
Well, that's true. That would always be the prerogative of those filing the petition, I suppose.
I mean, they were obviously filed together, and, but as two different, two separate, under two separate titles. That would be in violation of the state statute.
That's the concern, anyway.
Right.
That's the question that, for the court's determination, yes.
Okay. Well, I was thinking, it sounds pretty obvious to me.
Well, you know, we, that's, you know, again, that, my opinion doesn't ultimately matter, and neither do any of us, other than the district court judge in this particular situation. I mean, it's our responsibility to identify what appears to be a question, but as far as definitively opining, that's left to the district court judge.
And does, is there statute, I mean, how long he has to?
Yes, he actually has 20 days. That's the other procedural aspect that is at work here and influences the urgency. Your obligation, as you might recall, is to determine whether or not an election is to be called. If the petition is determined to be valid, your obligation is to call that election within 30 days. Part of the significance of the timing and frankly, the, the matter that prompted the calling of a special meeting and having you address this potentially as early as today was that we anticipate that if you choose to direct us to file the petition, that it would be filed as quickly as possible. The district court judge has 20 days in which to render his or her ruling on the questions If your determination, if you direct us to file by your action today, we would do so as quickly as possible, presumably tomorrow, that that would then, the court has those 20 days. And that being the fourth, that would make that deadline for the court's ruling as the 24th. And that brings us in right within the 30 days for you all to address whether an election is to be called, depending upon the court's determination.
Right.
If you request that we pursue it. So it is a rather tight timeframe as this type of matter, and that's why that statutory procedure is there. It recognizes the urgency of these matters, given the timeframes under the statute. So that's part of the picture as well.
Which is why we meet today, not Monday, on this item.
Exactly.
Right.
The calendar doesn't go out that fast.
Exactly.
Okay.
Any more comment? Public comment? Mr. Ruska? You have a comment?
Ray Ruska, 235 North San Antonio. I didn't, wasn't aware of this meeting until Tim Harran told me about it about 20 minutes ago, so I'm kind of not real, very well-prepared on responding here as far as some of the Probably the one issue I could respond to would be the predated signatures. That's obviously just an error because there's only several on, I think, one page, and that probably, the person signing the petition probably didn't realize he put down the wrong date. And so, that's, that's one part as far as the, and if you look at the, this petition couldn't even have been valid until after the second publication in the paper. And that was like the 28th or 29th of February. And we're talking about, as far as I know, it was like, Don Merriman told me about this about an hour ago, about this, what we, what to do about it, because he didn't know either. And I said, "Well, it's probably just an error because of, they put down the wrong date." You know, so you can just mark a line through those and don't count them.
He probably doesn't have the authority to just mark through things.
Well, I understand that. Okay, that does make some sense. And as far as the, the items that are in this petition, that there were several pages in it that were about a different issue, was an error also. It should not have been filed with it. So I personally went through all of those and I didn't catch it. So it's, it's just a, it's just a, to me, it's just a simple error, and even though you're supposed to file it as one petition about a single issue, it's, it was based on an error that occurred. I mean, it wasn't intentional to confuse anything. The two pages that were filed in error were probably, there were some other pages that should have been filed. Apparently, it just got overlooked or it didn't get it, didn't get it, didn't notice it in time. And, and as far as, let's see, those two issues, the predated signatures and the, the petition being filed as one, you know, those two extra pages or pages that were in there were, didn't, weren't supposed to be filed with it. You know, it just, it's just an error. And so determining whether or not you decide to go forward with this and go to the judge, it's going to slow down the process somewhat. Maybe the option would be just bring this issue to Don Merriman and say, "You can't count these two extra pages and these predated signatures," which is pretty much obvious an error. If you address this through judicial means, it's going to take some time, we're going to get out of time sequence here. And it's basically, there's a lot of people that sign this petition that are going to be a little upset about some of the details and, you know, what's going on here. But if it goes to the judicial process, being able to address that issue, the judge of the district court would actually address that issue, whether or not he determined or she determined that it was, it was based on just a, an error that happened. And let's put this way, I wouldn't have intentionally done any of these things, you know? And of course, the issue about the signature address on some of the petitions that Mr. Bankston brought up, the notary that's, that, I signed some of these petitions. I says, "Well, should I put down my entire address?" He says, "No, just put down Salina, Kansas." That's, of course, that's what I did. I was at the advice of a notary, you know? And of course, he knew who was signing it and, you know, so that was, that was okay for him to do that. Legally, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure about that because there, I even wanted to put the address down initially, but, you know, he just said, "Okay, just write this, the city." And as far as the elector is concerned, anybody in the state of Kansas can be an elector if they're, if they've been registered to vote. I think you... I think you look up statute, and maybe Mr. Bingson might agree with that, possibly. And you don't have to live in Salina, is what I've, what I've read about it. You can be any elector in the state of Kansas. So that means if you're a registered voter, and you saw him sign it, it validates them, observing them signing the petition. And so my, my recommendation is just, instead of slowing this process down further by going to district court, maybe try to use some common sense and proceed into agreeing to allow Don Merriman to do a couple of things, which is, you know, one is to, about the pre, pre-signatures, to allow him to just, don't count them. They'll knock it down to two signatures. And then the other issue is, is as far as the, excuse me, I just lost my train of thought here. I'm, I'm kind of overloaded here, because I wasn't even, I had no idea what was going on. And I'm trying to, if we, just go ahead and let Don Merriman just count up the signature, maybe that's the way to approach this. I mean, I would agree, you know, or stipulate to that, that these two extra petitions that were in there were not about the issue. I stipulate that. The issue was about the.
Is there anything else, Mr. Ruska?
Well, let's see, the.
We've about done our five minutes, so.
I have one question. Were you a circulator for the petitions?
Yes.
As well? Did you provide a copy of the ordinance for persons to look at when they were signing?
Actually, the, the ordinance, "Shall it become effective?" is based on what the Kansas State Constitution requires. I never saw anything that said you had to provide a copy of the ordinance so that the public could read about it. The first three or four sentences of the petition explain what it was about. Shall it become effective?
But there was no detail about what was included in that ordinance that was trying, that was on the, the petition?
Well, not a summarized version or an extended version. It was based on what the city provided when they passed the ordinance, you know, the 39. And if, I don't know if the actual city actually provided that information in their packet to pass it. I don't know if I even, I never did see one, but.
We, we published it in the newspaper twice.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm talking about when you voted on it.
Yeah, we, we.
It's part of the packet.
Passed an ordinance, yeah.
Well, the, well, the ordinance was maybe, I don't know how many pages it was, but it was probably a few pages, but I was, personally, I was going by what the statute of the Constitution says as far as, "Shall it become effective?" It's a charter ordinance. It's something different than a regular ordinance. It requires some extra things you have to do. And so all I can do is tell you what I know about it. I'm, I'm just trying to be helpful with continuation, and if there's, if there's some way to circumvent or go on to the, you know, district court, you know, we can let the judge decide it too. You know, I don't have any issue with that.
Okay, well, I, I thank you for your comments.
Oh, thank you, Kay.
And what is the decision of the commission?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution Number 167347 and direct city council to file a petition in Saline County District Court challenging the validity of the protest petition for Charter Ordinance Number 39.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pass Resolution Number 167347, a resolution making certain findings relating to the invalidity of a charter ordinance protest petition filed in the office of city clerk relating to Charter Ordinance Number 38 and Charter Ordinance Number 39, and directing the filing of a petition in Saline County District Court challenging the validity of the protest petition. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can we have a quick discussion?
Sure.
I want to just clarify something. On, on this action, in the motion that I made, it was in regard to the protest petition for 39. Did it need to be more generic than that, because there, because 38 was, two petitions for 38? I mean, so should my, should I, should I amend my motion to be more generic on the challenge, on the validity of the protest petition, to leave it general and not?
The, the resolution speaks in terms of both, but I, that's the matter we were discussing briefly. I do think it would be helpful to clarify that point.
And then also, as to a timing issue to perhaps, well, let me just, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that, that the motion be amended to strike after the validity of the protest petition, to strike Charter 39, Charter Ordinance Number 39. And then also to direct staff also that, at a time as, as soon as possible.
Okay, is there a second?
Or if you would rather specify, no later than tomorrow, that's fine.
No later than tomorrow.
That's fine.
Is there a second?
Second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same side.
I had one quick question.
Thank you.
Who are you going to sue?
I don't know if anybody caught the question, is who you're, who are you going to sue, which we're not suing anyone.
No.
For clarification, it's asking for a, you can clarify if I'm incorrect, Greg, but it's asking the court to make a decision on the, the issues that are brought to it.
The validity.
It is, it is a matter of, there was guidance provided in that Prairie Village case, at least in terms of the way that that matter was approached. And in that case, the, there was a, it appears that there was a single circulator, but it is the circulator that was named. Prelimarily, and we have no desire to name anyone unnecessarily, certainly, but it, given the guidance in that case, it would appear as though it may very well be necessary to name the circulators.
Okay, so it'd be multiple circulators?
Right. As I say, there were approximately 13 circulators.
Okay, thank you. Madam Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same side?